I'd like to call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from Lakeview Community Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Haven, Mary Lou O'Connell, and Steve Arons.
Good evening. If I may just open with a few words from the Book of Joshua as God encouraged the leader of his people. I love the words, "I will be with you; I will not leave you, nor forsake you." He says, "Be strong and of good courage." And in verse seven, "Only be strong and very courageous that you may observe to do according to all the law which I have given." And then in verse eight, it says, "The book of the law shall not depart from your mouth, but you shall meditate in it day and night, that you may observe to do according to all that is written in it; for then you will make your way prosperous, and then you will have good success." And just to be careful, he added once more, "Have I not commanded you, be strong and of good courage?" Precious heavenly Father, I ask for strength. I ask for your courage for these that lead us. I ask for the mayor and for the council members, that you will guide them, that you will direct their pathways, and truly that they will prosper in all their ways, even as their souls prosper. I thank you for giving them to the city of Lake Havasu, to each of us, that they may rule over us, that they may watch carefully the things that our city needs and each of the citizens of this city need. We ask that they would be strong and of great courage in your precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our board president, Steve Arons, is going to tell you a little bit about our organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. And last time I appeared before the council, I gave a beautiful speech and forgot to tell you my name, so I'll say it again. I'm Steve Arons, Board President of Haven Family Resource Center. Haven Family Resource Center is a nonprofit advocacy center which has been providing a safe environment for families since 2001. Haven provides services for family in crisis and victims of all crimes. While the majority of the crimes we respond to are child abuse, domestic violence, and sexual assault, we also assist victims of all violent and nonviolent crimes. Haven Center offers a safe, comfortable, and confidential home-like atmosphere which includes rooms, a shower, a playroom, quiet rooms, and kitchen facilities. Families have the opportunity to obtain a variety of crisis services in one location with all agencies working together in the best interests of the victim. We also provide on-scene crisis response where trained advocates go to the hospital, medical centers, courts, and accompany law enforcement to residential scenes to assist families. While we respond to crimes after they occur, we also provide education and awareness and hopefully prevent these types of crimes. Haven Family Resource Center houses the Mojave County Child Abuse Prevention Council, which is a volunteer council that provides community education, awareness, awareness to programs helping to combat the spread of child abuse and family violence. Our community education and outreach component includes trainings and presentations on child abuse, domestic violence, positive parenting, and the Food for Kids program. The Food for Kids program is provided to all Lake Havasu City schools to help homeless and at-risk students that may have little or no food over the weekends. The goal is to give every child, when they show up for school Monday, that they've had adequate nutrition to start their school week. We also host events during April for child abuse prevention and in October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You may have noticed the blue pinwheels around town because we have informational booths set up at the Aquatic Center, City Hall, the Community College, and the library to celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month and provide families with education and resources. We will also be attending several community events throughout the month. The Haven Family Resource Center is fully accredited member of the National Children's Alliance and the Arizona Child and Family Advocacy Center Network, as well as the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence. We offer tours of our facility and we encourage any member of the council to come down and tour, as well as any member of the public. We would just ask that you schedule an appointment due to the sensitivity and confidentiality of our business. You can also obtain more information on our website and our Facebook page. And I thank council for the opportunity to speak before you.
Excellent. Thank you for being here and thank you for doing this work in our community.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the roll call. The city clerk would call the roll.
Councilmembers Cal Shaheen.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Grove.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments would be limited to five minutes or less. There is a light indicator box at the main podium. Green means you have plenty of time, yellow means you have a minute left, and red means the time is up. This would be an opportunity just to address the city council. We wouldn't be able to have a two-way conversation because of open meeting laws, but if you are here for an item that's actually on the agenda during the public hearing, we can have that two-way conversation, so I encourage you to wait until that time. With that being said, would anyone like to address the city council in the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item six is our consent agenda. Would any members of the council want to remove any items for further discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Councilmember Koch and a second by Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, that was my MPO meeting. We're ready to vote. Yeah.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Yes. All right, item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor of City Council, there are several vacancies on the Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular member. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens can pick up an application at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. All right, item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Go ahead and get started this evening with an update about last week. Last Tuesday, Mayor, you held the first-ever Community Resource Committee meeting, and it was held at the Aquatic Center. Social service organizations were invited, all those with common interest in serving those in need in the community. The event was very well attended. We had roughly between 75 and 100 people that attended the event, and we learned a lot about all the services available in Lake Havasu City to support our residents. The group plans to collectively create a Lake Havasu City Resource Guide, and we'll meet again in six months on August 15th, also at the Aquatic Center. Also last Tuesday night, Hyatt hosted a community engagement event with hashtag U Matter from the Havasu Community Health Foundation, and it featured keynote speaker Katie McPherson from Phoenix, who talked about mental health and suicide awareness. Overall, the event was very successful and well-attended, with nearly 150 teens and parents that were there on Tuesday night. We had crucial questions and conversations that were held during the panel discussions following Katie's presentation, and the Hyatt kids did a great job facilitating and moderating the event. Councilmember McCoy and her husband Kim made it on Fox and Friends just last week while visiting New York City. She brought national attention to Lake Havasu City and did a great job highlighting that we're the home of the London Bridge. After a brief discussion on the street, they actually continued talking about Lake Havasu City and the London Bridge afterwards. Thank you to Kim and Councilmember McCoy for advocating for Lake Havasu City. Our annual pavement preservation program, the work starts on Monday, April 15th. This is going to last for approximately four weeks. The project will consist of approximately 650,000 square yards of polymer modified chip seal surface, and it'll cover about 30 miles of street and parking lot in various locations of the city. It'll cover about 7% of our roads. The initial work will start on the outer areas of the city to accommodate the desert storm event. The chip sealing process is an efficient, cost-effective method of prolonging our roads and extending the life of the asphalt. From an update on the road improvements over on Lake Havasu Avenue between Swanson and Mesquite, from January to today, crews have made underground and above-ground infrastructure improvements. Underground improvements include the installation of a new water main from Swanson to Mesquite, new fire lines to every business in the area, new water service lines to every business, and new irrigation lines are a part of the project. The above-ground improvements will include new ADA ramps at each street corner, new sidewalk and curb on both sides of Lake Havasu Avenue, new driveways, and new traffic signal heads, as well as landscaping and streetscape improvements. Paving of the McCulloch intersection and the two outer lanes between Swanson and Mesquite is scheduled to take place on Monday, so we're going to start to see some pavement placed in the construction area next week, and I think that's well anticipated by our residents out there. The next steps after that is going to include the demolition of the inner lanes and the construction of the median, and then lastly will be the inner lanes will be paved. Contractors worked many nights, as recently as last night. Work overnight includes the installation of the water main in the intersections and changing over some of the water services and fire lines. We do remain on schedule, and old paving will be completed by the Memorial Day weekend. After that, we'll have some minor landscaping and cleanup to punch list items remaining, and will be completed with the project. Again, appreciate the public's patience with the construction on Lake Havasu Avenue. Then we're going to start work on Swanson Avenue, and that's going to start the first week of May. And construction is expected to last six months, with a completion date going into September. That project area will include Swanson area from Akoma Boulevard and Smoke Tree Avenue. When the work is completed, the public will enjoy a new road and pedestrian improvements, which will include sidewalk, multi-use path, and a bike lane. Work at the Havasu Riviera is progressing very nicely. The water and sewer infrastructure is installed, and the roads are now paved. Only a few items remain, including the median, some backfilling, and a few other small miscellaneous items, which should all be completed by the end of this month. The work on the intersection is also complete. When power is brought to the site by the developer, we can then complete the testing and striping needed to make the stoplight operable. Lake Havasu City PD, our police department is currently accepting applications for police officer training, and those applications are being accepted now through May 2nd. Anybody interested can visit the police department's website at lhcpd.com and click on the "Join Our Team" link for more information. And finally, a reminder that all city offices and Havasu Mobility will be closed next Friday, April 19th, in observance of Good Friday. As always, our police and fire personnel are on duty, and trash recycling services will not be interrupted, and we will resume normal schedules on Monday, April 22nd. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McCoy?
I just want to say that we had such a great time in New York, but I promised my husband I would never, ever, ever complain about traffic in our city again, and also our roads, the construction. We've got it made.
Put it in context, right? Yeah.
Do any of the members of the council have any questions for Mr. Knutson? All right, thank you. Moving on to our public hearing portion of the evening, starting with item 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 19-3294, Appointing a Regular Member to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting appointment as a regular member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The appointment is necessary to fill a vacancy created by an expired term of a regular member with a term ending June 30th, 2022. Mr. Ed Heel is here today, and his application is provided to you in the packet. Happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Heel, would you like to make a presentation to the council?
I'm supposed to be short and sweet, so I'll give you the short version. I'm Ed Heil. That's a German name, great pronunciation. My wife and I have lived here for the past 14 years. I am retired military and retired from Sprints, so I'm a double retiree, really retired. Came to, I'm active in the community, been a member of the Havasu Four Wheelers, the Sidewinders. I'm a life member of the Gun Club, and I'm currently the president of the Desert Hawks RC Club, which you probably all know me as the Airplane Guy. Second term. I enjoy the activity here and all the activities here in Lake Havasu City, and I look forward to helping out with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, any capacity that I may be.
Thank you.
Two minutes?
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Heil? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grove?
I consider it tremendous honor to make a motion. If I may, I move to adopt Resolution Number 19-3294, appointing Mr. Ed Heil as regular member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term ending June 30th of 2022.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Grove and a second by Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, congratulations, and thank you for volunteering, Mr. Heil. The next item is item 8.2, Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding with the Havasu Freedom Foundation for the Havasu Memorial Walkway. Ms. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Back in 2008, the Havasu Memorial Walkway was commenced, and at that time, the city and the Havasu Freedom Foundation entered into an MOU. Since that time, the project has been revamped, and so it's necessary to enter into a new MOU with the foundation. In the proposed MOU, it kind of outlines the responsibilities of each party, where the foundation is responsible to purchase the memorial bricks and deliver them to the city. The foundation is solely responsible for the management and administration of the project, while the city agrees to accept delivery of the bricks and then install them twice a year. And the memorandum is proposed for a five-year term, and then there's a requirement in the memorandum that the city is to receive a letter from any owner of the property in which the walkway is to traverse. And we have received a letter from VRE allowing that practice to continue on our property. So if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Gary? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the Havasu Freedom Foundation for the Havasu Memorial Walkway.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McCoy and a second by Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3, Introduce Ordinance Number 19-1216, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, to Add Chapter 8.14, Repeated Use of Emergency Services. Chief Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm here this evening for a rather unfortunate topic, but I think that the numbers that I provided you really demonstrate why I'm here. If I can begin with kind of the structure of what you have before you, and then I really would like to focus a little bit more on the human aspect of this and really the goal behind why this is coming to you. 8.14 would be a change to Title VIII, the Health and Safety, to add chapter, I'm sorry, the ordinance would be a change to Title VIII, Health and Safety, to add Chapter 8.14, the repeated use. It's modeled after the 8.12 that currently exists, that's the false alarm ordinance in the police department, and the 8.13 that currently exists is the false alarm ordinance for the fire department. So when those were developed years ago, there was some expectations and some goals, and we find that those obviously have worked very well and have really proven to be the tool that we hope them to be. This 8.14 actually takes that language and copies it, you'll find almost exactly for many areas, to create kind of that same tool for a new kind of modern-day topic with kind of an older style of how we could maybe address it, and maybe encourage some changes to how we could really improve a situation that is one that really is probably not discussed in most circles. So that's where 8, how it was developed and how it falls into that chapter with the other police and fire ordinances, and that's why you have it this evening in that format. To get to really the human aspect and the unfortunate part of this conversation is, the reality is that the use of emergency services for really social services and home care has been kind of a developing topic over many years. It's a nationwide issue. We talk about it in our circles, if you will, as really a common increase to the use of emergency rooms and everything else. This is one of those topics that just go in line with it. I want to point out that the 8.14, just like the other ordinances, don't address real needs, or don't necessarily apply for real needs. If you come home post-operative, you have complications, and we go to your house three times, four times, five times today, that's entirely okay. We understand that, we're accustomed to that, and the ordinance specifically says that in the case of need, it doesn't apply. It really is more of a use issue. The use of really the emergency services for home care is one that can be easily used because it is quite frankly convenient, and that's really where we have landed in the numbers that I provided to you here this evening. The truth of the matter is, is that unfortunately, these situations oftentimes include unhealthy life choices. The lifestyle plummets, the quality of life plummets, health plummets, and quite frankly, life expectancy plummets. As we began to develop this and what you have before you today, there was obviously a recent extreme situation that brought us to kind of trying to come up with a tool. We knew as we were developing this that it was very likely that when I arrive here tonight, that situation probably wouldn't present itself any further, because we know that even without this ordinance, these situations tend to come and go in waves because all of that decline in everything in terms of their lifestyle and their health and their mobility, and quite frankly, again, the life expectancy, always solves the problem kind of before we get to this, if that makes sense. And it's kind of a difficult topic to say to the public, I don't want to alarm people, but the fact of the matter is, is this does go on regularly all over the country. As the example with the ordinance that I sent to you, I sent you some examples of the last 13 months and some occasions of us going to people's homes for care that really was not emergency-related. We did include, because after having some conversation with Chief Doyle, there could be some application in the future for them, but this primarily was originally developed for home care by way of emergency services, and that's how we landed here tonight. As is with all the cases in these, you'll see that it escalated. We arrived at the number of nine because that was a couple weeks, a couple times a week, and a spare one for the month, because we really were hoping that we would be able to influence some decisions and choices prior to ever arriving at a bill. The false alarm ordinances occur after a couple occasions each year. This is after nine occasions each month. So the reality is, is that's 108 times this year, I actually could still use emergency services for home care and still not reach the point that we've now are going to send a bill. That kind of implies as though we don't want to, and quite frankly, we don't want to. I hope that we never actually send a bill, and if I send more than a couple, I'm probably going to be back asking you to change that and modify the number. So the purpose is the tool, not necessarily the bill. Now, just like the false alarm ordinances, I understand that it can be a little bit of a sensitive issue, and I'm trying to be sensitive to the folks that really are the numbers on this paper. So this example, number one, escalated over the course of a year to 300 occasions. That reached 80 occasions in January. So we take this, this touches us very deeply because this is the deterioration of people before our eyes, and we really would like a tool to kind of prevent this. That 80 occasions in January, although that's shocking, the number that is more shocking is the amount of times that we went to that location to provide that non-emergency care in March, because in March it was zero, because as always the case, it solves itself. So the reality is, is that we find ourselves on regular occasion, providing really social services that were not meant to be. The chief has about six patrol cars on at any given time, we have about six engines on at any given time. We can really stretch those and use those to where they're not available very easily. On this particular instance in January, while having a conversation about that location and this situation during one of those 80 occasions, there was in fact a true emergency just a block away. That engine's there and not available, and what that does is that impacts those other people in town that really are relying on the same services. So it really is, it really is a deeply unfortunate situation, but we think what this does is this gives us the tool to at least try to influence some decisions prior to it getting to that point. So to clarify slightly, because there's a little bit of confusion, this has absolutely nothing to do with dialing 911. The truth of the matter is, is that's a whole separate issue that Dan and I have talked about. That is in and of itself a whole other topic. People call 911 repeatedly, many, many, many times, and this isn't about that. This is about actually arriving at a home and providing care. Now, another obvious question is, we'll just don't go. So we have exceptional dispatchers. If you call and say you want the police or the fire department to come clean your pool, the dispatcher will tell you very politely, "No, that's not going to happen." So understand that this isn't us going to people's homes because they simply want their flowers watered. This is quite frankly, people knowing that there's a way to get quick, convenient, and free service, because there's ways to do that. I can be a little disingenuous on the phone when I make that 911 call. The fact is, if I have a medical alert pendant, and I press that, and I know that when they come on the line and the monitoring service asks if I'm okay, if I just don't say anything, I'm going to get an engine immediately. The application to the police department would be, if I dial 911, and when the dispatcher answers, I hang up the phone, and then intentionally don't answer when they call back, you're going to get a police car immediately. So the fact of the matter is, is again, this is a situation that has been developing nationwide to the point that we just, we think a tool to help these people prior to them deteriorate into the point that it solves itself probably is an appropriate step. So, and I apologize, but it is a very difficult topic. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any questions for the chief?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Lynn? Do we currently have any contacts or agencies that we can give these numbers to, to these residents that would be besides the public safety?
We do. We have, we will search for durable medical, we will do referrals, we call adult protective services fairly regularly. There's a whole gamut of places that we can call to try and do these, and I think the lower numbers on the list demonstrate that oftentimes we're able to do that. The reason we don't care going is if it's that situation of being post-operative and having some complications. We understand that, we're used to that. Maybe it's a severe decline in mobility or some medical condition to where there's a little bit of a waiting period before people can get into a facility that would be a better location for them. That creates some of this, and we understand that, and we realize that that short period is completely acceptable. In the same way we have to be honest in the use of medical pendants and 911, we have to be honest that oftentimes it's a complete lack of, or just an adamant denial or refusal to accept any other options. We would never let anybody reach this point if they simply allowed us to help them, you know, find another option.
And I know you don't want to talk about the fees, but are you even discussed what that type of fee is?
I'm very sorry. So we transitioned, as you know, we did a lot of the fee structures in the last few years. We transitioned many of our fees from an actual set fee to the market rate. So when we go out into the desert, when we go out into the lake, we routinely send something for bills for something, maybe once a month. They're very few, and they are purely market rate-driven. So it's the federal rate for the equipment that's used, and the hourly rate, the market rate, or fully burden weight, if you will, for the you will, for the staff. Um, we even take it further and if we have an occasion where we go out into the desert, um, and based on the call information, there's a, say a Polaris and one apparatus going out, uh, the B C may call for a second one because there's a little uncertainty what's going on. Uh, when no, when, when those arrive, if, if the person realistically was helped with that single Polaris and the other one was just a precaution, we don't even add those to the bill, we, we take them off. So, you know, we do, we do everything we can to, to, to not bill, I don't particularly care to do it, but it's a reality of the world we live in and, and when we do send a bill, it's, it's, it's very reasonable.
Do any other members of the council have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for the chief. Um, with the example you gave with two hundred and ninety responses in thirteen months, is it my understanding that that was one of the, uh, medical pendants? So a lot of the times it's, they're not responding, so when you get there, you don't know if it's a true medical emergency or someone just needing to reach something off the top shelf or to be moved around the house or something?
Correct. That, that particular, that particular, uh, uh, item or, or location was a medical alert.
Well, that's my concern is, looking at the list you gave us, there's really only three situations in the last thirteen months that would even possibly go over those nine usages, which I still think is a little bit high at nine, but, um, it is a huge tax on our, um, medical system, our emergency system, so, um, I find that concerning that, especially if it's just a pendant, that if they're not calling nine one one and the dispatcher can't ask any questions or at least see if, if there's a true medical emergency, but like I said, as soon as that goes off, you guys have to treat it as if it's a metal sirens and all that going there and without knowing what you're going into.
Yes, sir. And, and I should point out that that, um, that's a little uncharacteristic. Obviously that, the first example of, of, of nearly three hundred responses, that is very extreme, that's not normal.
Well, I think that's what this ordinance is kind of for, to help us with situations like that, if the family is brought to their attention that you could be billed because your family member's doing this, they could possibly find other solutions before it gets to that extreme point.
Yes, sir. And, and those more common numbers, uh, that we, we tend to not see them overlapping, but again, maybe that is the trend, um, as to why we did see some overlap. That second and third example is certainly far more common. And even in those occasions, if we take off one that maybe we could say was legitimate, that one would have never even even received a bill, would have resulted in one, in that particular situation for the fifty-five responses. And, and I'm sorry to, to answer the question about the, um, I didn't give you a number. An engine, uh, a captain, an engineer and a firefighter, paramedic at an average rate for one hour is two hundred and eighty dollars. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do any other members of the council have any questions?
If I may. Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments on it. Uh, chief, whenever you respond to these calls, you run code three, lights and siren, correct?
On occasions where we have developed obviously a, a understanding of what maybe it's not a true emergency, there are times when we do not, but for the most part, yes.
It's how do, I mean, even a broken clock is right twice a day. How do we know when it's, it is an actual bona fide emergency when, you know, the little boy that cried wolf?
Correct.
And then he does have an emergency or she has an emergency, so, uh, I see a liability issue with, uh, with us running, uh, lights and siren through the city of town three times a day for somebody that just needs some help opening up an aspirin bottle. Um, it's just, uh, I don't want people to be afraid to call nine one one, that's what the, the service is there for. Uh, if you have a, an emergency or you feel you're having an emergency, by all means, call nine one one. This is for those extreme cases where the people are abusing the system and not looking at the other options to take care of themselves or their families, just not taking care of them and we're using nine one one resources for, uh, to help people get in and out of bathtubs and, and that's not a, a good use of our resources. And as you said, when that's happening, those resources are now not able to respond to bona fide emergencies, so, thank you.
Do any other members of the council have any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grove?
Um, if I may, chief, um, I, I would like to revisit something that you touched on, um, which was, you actually had an actual emergency and response time. So one of the things that, you know, we have discussed at this council numerous times, uh, is our average response time. And if we have, um, a fire engine responding to an incident that's not actually an emergency and another emergency transpires in the same area, uh, can you give me, um, in, in your best judgment, what kind of impact that could have on our overall call times and, uh, and sort of flesh out a little bit what the ramifications are in that one instance that, that you highlighted?
It's hard to pin a number on it if we're talking about a location that's in the center of town that maybe engine five from Lake Havasu would take and the engine from, the truck from station one has to take it. That impact obviously is far less than if it's at the end of the island. Um, so that of course would add, add many minutes, but the, the, the truth is, um, there's, there's always the, this, the, the situation that the time is longer if we have to send the next available because one's not available. And we will never eliminate the situation where we have people tied up. There are actually significant emergencies going on, uh, day in and day out to where the, the patrolmen and, and the firemen are, are, are not available ideally where we want them at every minute. But this is a good example of when we, we know it's, uh, happening at a, at a significant pace and impacting those times, um, that we could mitigate it simply because it, it's a time when we probably should have that, that unit available.
Um, if I may follow up just with a couple of comments. Um, so when we look at our overall capacity with emergency services, we do have to look at data and we have to evaluate that data as best we can, but the ramifications here are extraordinarily large. If our call times start reaching up into the seven, eight, nine minute area, you know, we're gonna have, you know, we have a real problem. And we're not there, uh, but, but this, you know, is a measure I think that's designed, uh, to prevent us from having that become a problem. But the other piece too, and I know it's hard for you to talk about this, it's hard for anybody to talk about this, um, not everybody who, uh, some of these things self-resolve because people quite frankly pass away.
Correct.
Um, sometimes our people are using this instead of a hospice service. Um, some people don't qualify for access, um, because block grants and the federal government have been reduced and so access has had to move people off the rolls. And so we do have people in our community who are in fact terminally ill, who do not qualify for some of the, um, options. And here's the piece that's important, our fire department is extraordinarily gifted at understanding the resources and our mayor and councilor Lynn and everybody who is involved in that meeting with our nonprofits, they're also putting together resources so that we can guide our community and the people in our community to the proper resources. Nobody should have to go through the process of dying alone and in the dark. I know death is a very difficult subject, um, but I was the executive director of hospice at Havasu for a period of time, so I am quite cognizant of the fact that people even on hospice services will call nine one one. They're afraid, they're scared, but sometimes, um, people are doing it for other reasons as you point out. And I think the vast majority of people are gonna get the service they need, um, from our fire department and I think if anybody, um, has concerns over the num- the number, the nine, I'm very sure, but I will ask you, chief, to speak to this. I am very sure that even if there is a shade of a doubt that our fire department is gonna be compassionate and we're not gonna try and charge somebody for something like that. You, I think, said that if you felt it was wrong, you would be back in our council chambers asking for a revision.
A- absolutely. And, and there are, there are any number of, of situations that really could make it, um, a legitimate emergency. Um, there was some conversation about what, what about someone who has mental illness? And, and could that impact the number of calls? Um, yes, it could. Um, and the fact is, is, is in retrospect and thinking about that a little bit more, that really can reasonably be considered a, a legitimate emergency because that, that person does have a, a medical condition. And so it, it really is intended to not be used on those occasions when we, we realize that we'll be there, uh, we realize that, that there will be occasions where these numbers, uh, can, can go very high. Uh, but the fact is, uh, uh, many of the people on this list and the, and, and, and it's presented as locations so that the public documents really can respect privacy, but, but those are people. And, and many of those did pass. Now thankfully that one, number one on the list, uh, mobility had plummeted to the point that thankfully it, another, uh, living arrangement was able to be made, but, um, but that's not always the case. And to your point, yes, very regularly, uh, these end in loss of life and so, uh, watching while that occurs is, is, is very problematic, or, you know, it's very disturbing.
Thank you, that's a good answer. And I just wanna also point out that on that compassionate piece, we really do, everybody cares deeply about this, but I'm, the language in this is eight point one four point oh three oh, the repeated use, uh, clause. It's very obvious that you've included language in here that gives you the flexibility you need so that nobody actually has to fear calling nine one one.
Correct. We, we, we want people to call nine one one.
I think, or other action necessary for the welfare of the general public or any of those other things. Anything in there could be used as, as, um, a way for our firefighters to exercise compassion. At the same time, we have to do something to be responsible with the use of our resources. So thank you, chief.
Sure. All right, councilmember Lynn, you have a question?
Y- yes, I just wanna make sure that we have something clarified. Just say, for example, you have a couple at the same residence, is it per residence? Is it per recipient?
It would be per person.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Do any other members of the council have any questions? Uh, for those watching at home or sitting in the audience, we, we keep talking about this list of people without ever giving numbers, so just to put some in perspective, uh, in location one is the, is the three hundred that, uh, the chief mentioned, location two was fifty-five, uh, uh, calls, uh, for service and this is the thirteen month, uh, lookback period. Uh, location three was thirty-five, uh, responses, so, um, that, that's kind of where the numbers are at. And, uh, from my perspective, the way I, I see some of this is, is more about the public conversation and, and some of that was accomplished through the, the last month while we're, we're having obviously this discussion here, we've had the discussion in, uh, several public forums, uh, but the, the, the real, uh, crux of, of this is, this is for all emergency services, so police services and fire, uh, fire and emergency services, uh, for our residents. We, we of course want everyone to call nine one one. Uh, basically the ordinance says, uh, nine times, nine time, nine opportunities per month with your life alert or X, M, or your device, um, or, or a call in, uh, but if, if it takes more than that, it takes more than that, uh, for, for true, true emergencies, uh, but it gives our, our emergency service personnel, uh, a tool to help educate and connect, uh, those citizens that need it the most with some of the services. So, um, so that's kind of like the big picture of, of where this is coming from. All right, uh, with, uh, no other comments from the council, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash twelve sixteen, amending Lake Havasu City Code Title Eight, Health and Safety to add Chapter Eight dot one four, Repeated Use of Emergency Services.
Second?
We have a motion by councilmember Dolan and a second by councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item is eight point four, adopt resolution number nineteen dash three two nine one, authorizing the submission of an application for federal fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, community development block grant, C D B G funds and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in the application. Ms. Maureen.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm Holly Maureen, the grants administrator for Lake Havasu City. This item relates to community development block grant funding, also known as C D B G. C D B G funds must be used to benefit low-income persons in areas, alleviate slum and blight or address an urgent need. The current C D B G, C D B G grants we rewarded totaled just over eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars benefiting low-income persons for owner occupied housing rehabilitation. We are submitting an application to Arizona Department of Housing for additional funding totaling three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars to be used for owner occupied housing rehabilitation within city limits for low-income homeowners. Homeowners must meet income and homeownership requirements in order to qualify for housing rehabilitation assistance. Home repair is essential for people who become physically disabled and cannot afford to make accommodations to their home for their disability. It's also critical to prevent homes from becoming dilapidated because the homeowners can't afford to make necessary repairs to their homes. Anyone interested in applying for housing rehabilitation can obtain an application on the city website, in the city hall lobby, or by contacting me. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Lynn?
Holly, could you give us some, um, like specifications of certain things that people could use this grant for?
Most of them use it for, um, new roofs, new air conditioners. Uh, we have housing program inspectors that are trained in the life expectancy of these units, so we don't just throw on a new roof because they say they need one or put on a new air conditioner because they say they need one. So, um, mostly roofs, air conditioners, plumbing, electrical, um, weatherization, ADA accessibility.
More question. Approximately, how many grants do you give per, per year or per cycle?
Um, so we receive, um, they're two-year grants, so right now I have two two-year grants.
I think I wanna rephrase, it's hard to say that. How many people do you usually help? How many residents are you helping?
I have, um, forty-six people on my waiting list right now. Um, currently I have six projects going on at one time.
Do any members have any additional questions? Vice Mayor Lane?
Yes, I don't have a question, I just, uh, have a statement. I have the opportunity to sp- to speak with Holly quite often and this is one of those things that we do for the people in the, here in Lake Havasu that may not be as fortunate. Uh, and Holly works really hard to make sure that those that cannot take care of their own homes, um, bec- for whatever reason, she gets them the grants to do that. So, uh, if you have a situation where you know someone that, uh, maybe they can't afford to put a new roof on their car or on their house and their, uh, their air conditioning isn't working in these hot summer times, uh, make sure that, uh, they reach out to Holly. That's a service that the city provides and it's, uh, extremely important and, uh, she does a good job with that, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Grove?
Uh, it's not exactly related to this particular thing, but I, I know that you save our city enormous amounts of money. Uh, a grants administrator is such a blessing for any municipality, but, uh, you also make sure that we're getting the best bids, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the things I'm very curious about, ballpark, I know you probably didn't come prepared for this, but do you have roughly an idea of how much money our grants add up to over the course of a year? How much money do you bring into this city?
Um, for my C D B G grants alone, um, like I said, it's eight hundred and, just over eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars over a two-year period. So it's two grants. Um, so, and the C D B G has the majority of the grant funding, um, not sure if Jill can, has a total amount of city funding or...
Uh, mayor, uh, councilmember, uh, Grove, I can, uh, we, we, right now we do a lot of our, our grant application processes handled by separate departments, so we have a police that apply for police grants and, uh, for the get 'em and, and the DUI enforcement that you see quite a bit, fire applies for their grants and actually we're starting to talk, uh, now about maybe going into the next budget year about, uh, Holly assuming some of the responsibilities about bringing that, that process in a little more centralized. So, um, right now it's kind of fragmented, all our departments are, are working on, um, acquiring and, and administering the grants, but we're gonna, we're gonna change that soon. Thanks to Holly.
And, and so if I may, I know it's a bit of a curveball, but Mr. City Manager, you may be the actual best person to ask this ans- ask this question to, would you have a guesstimate?
Uh, it's a number that I'd rather not take a stab at, I can bring back a number at a later time, but, uh, we're, we're, we're definitely a couple million.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's measured in millions, it's, the number's measured with six zeros at the end and, uh, that works really important, so I just wanted to mention that.
All right, any additional questions? Uh, all right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to introduce ordinance number one nine dash one two one six. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong line. But I do wanna make the motion.
The meeting will pause briefly.
I move to adopt resolution number one nine dash three two nine one, authorizing the submission of an application for federal fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, C D B G funds and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in the application.
Second?
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lane and a second by councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, item eight point five, Adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash three two nine five, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the design and construction of a high-intensity actuated crosswalk beacon, otherwise known as HAWK, and the reconstruction of the intersection corners and ramps at Pima Drive and Tacoma Boulevard. Jeff.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have before you tonight is a proposal for an intergovernment agreement, agreement with Lake Havasu City and ADOT to fund, design, and construct a pedestrian hybrid signal. A hybrid signal is a specialized traffic signal that's used to stop cars when pedestrians are crossing the street. The proposed location for this project is at Tacoma Boulevard North and Pima Drive North, which is very close to Smoke Tree Elementary School. If approved tonight, this will be the first HAWK signal that the city of Lake Havasu will, will have. For those of you who are not familiar with what a HAWK signal is, a HAWK signal is a high-intensity activated crosswalk. It's basically a traffic signal that's used for, for helping pedestrians cross the street. The equipment used to construct a HAWK signal is, is identical in many ways to a regular traffic signal. It uses poles, mast arms, and electrical equipment that are, are identical to what you'd see in a regular traffic signal. The major difference between a traffic signal and a HAWK signal is that a regular traffic light, as, as you all would know, has a red, a yellow, and a green indication. A HAWK signal has two red lights and a yellow light underneath. It does not have a green indication on it. When a HAWK signal is not being used, it just simply goes dark. To better illustrate, the next slide helps us illustrate exactly how a, a HAWK signal would operate. Initially, when there's, there's nobody crossing the street, you would have a, a HAWK signal that's dark, as you would see on the, on the first slide. When a pedestrian activates the traffic signal, or the HAWK signal, it would go into a flashing yellow mode, followed by a steady yellow indication, and that tells drivers that you need to get ready to stop because it's about ready to turn red. The next phase, it would be red, which tells drivers they need to stop, and after a certain period of time, it would go to a flashing red, which tells drivers they can proceed through the intersection once, once a pedestrian has crossed over to the, to the other side. To better illustrate how a HAWK signal operates, I have a very short video to, to share with you.
When motorists approach a dark beacon, they may continue through the crosswalk without slowing down or stopping. A flashing yellow light means that a pedestrian is waiting to cross, and motorists should proceed with caution. The flashing yellow lights will be followed by solid yellow lights, which indicate that motorists should stop if safe to do so. The solid yellow light will be followed by solid red lights. As usual, when seeing a red light, motorists need to stop. The solid red light will be followed by alternating flashing red lights, which indicates that after first stopping, motorists can proceed with caution through the intersection as long as there are no pedestrians in the crosswalk.
And that basically describes how a, a HAWK signal operates. Now, there are several reasons why we chose this location. First of all, the accident history is pretty, pretty severe. Over the course of a five-year period, there was a fatality and several incapacitating accidents, which qualified this, this project for federal funding. There's also a hill crest on Tacoma Drive as you approach the intersection, which makes it very, very difficult to see the, the intersections and paths out as they, they cross through that intersection. And as mentioned earlier, we have Smoke Tree Elementary School, that's very close to this location as well, too. And for all those reasons, it qualified for federal funding, only at this specific location. I would like to, I'd like to point out some of the, the benefits of a HAWK signal. A HAWK signal is known to reduce crashes by about seventy percent. Ninety percent driver compliance rates for, for, for stopping and allowing pedestrians across the street is, is, is expected, versus a, a seventy percent compliance rate if you didn't have a HAWK. That means three percent of the time, or three, three out of ten times a driver goes by, they're, they're not stopping for pedestrians. HAWK signals are highly visible at great distances, which is great because we have that hill crest there. And it's, it's also good for night because they, they light up, and it's very easy, easy to see. The cost of the HAWK signal is about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three hundred for, for construction, and a hundred and sixty for, for design. As mentioned earlier, we have grant funding for this, which is going to pay for a hundred percent of the, of the project, with zero contribution by the city. As far as the schedule goes, we can expect the design to be finished by the end of two thousand nineteen, construction to start by March of next year, and to be completed and fully operational by August of two thousand twenty. So, in summary, city staff recommends that council approves the, the intergovernmental agreement that we have before you tonight to construct a, a HAWK signal. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan.
Just watching your video, do we know how many robots currently cross Tacoma on a daily basis?
I have, I have no data to support that.
No data, okay. Were, were other locations also looked at in this study, or is this just, it's presented to us as, this met the criteria, do you want it or not, kind of situation, or?
That's a good question. Because of the high accident rate, it only qualifies for one location, so that, that was the location that we could only apply those funds to.
Councilmember Lynn?
I may have missed it, is it, is it by sensory, or did they push a button, the pedestrian?
They push a button.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lynn?
Yes, sir. The school district, they have chimed in on this particular matter as well, and they've actually asked for a HAWK here.
Yes, I failed to mention that. We met with the school, they were very excited about that, and we also had in your communication packet tonight a letter from the, from the school superintendent. They're highly supportive of this project.
Is, when we're doing the actual construction of, of this, what type of issues will it have on a coma, while they're, they're actually installing it?
I, I don't think there's going to be a lot of issues for traffic control. We're not actually tearing the street out. We're going to be putting in poles, and we're also going to be upgrading some of the handicap ramps. So, you're not going to see a lot of disruption as you're seeing today over at Lake Havasu Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I, on that street, at least two or three times a, a day, and I think this is a great thing because the street is so much traffic, and with the kids crossing, it's very dangerous, so I think it's really a good, and especially, you know, it's so nice that the grant to cover the cost of that, so it's good.
Thank you.
All right, any, Councilmember Groh?
I'd like to amplify what Councilmember McCoy has just said, that it's a dangerous area for our children. Amplify the point that was made about the school district requesting this because it affects not one, but two schools. And then, I'm just going to add this in. We, I don't remember the actual data numbers off the top of my head, but ballpark close enough. You have a huge statistical swing in mortality between the rate of speed of thirty-five miles an hour and forty-five miles an hour. You go from something in the order of a twenty-six to twenty-eight percent mortality predictive at thirty-five miles an hour or less, when a human is hit by a vehicle. In that short ten mile an hour, up to forty-five miles an hour, that goes over ninety percent. It's an enormous change. So, my assumption, can you give me an idea, what would the average speed of a car be going in that area?
I believe the posted speed limit is thirty-five. I, I think it's safe to say that the, the speed limit is probably, or the, the average speed is probably higher than that. I don't have a speed study handy to, to really support that at this point.
Okay, so, I guess what I'm saying is, I've been through a speed study on this before, and I'm going to suggest that if a child were hit at a rate of thirty-five miles an hour, or between thirty-five and forty-one, or forty-two, let's say, which may be an average speed, when nobody's looking, sorry, Chief. People may have exceeded their limits just a little now and then, but I think we would have a very high chance of mortality. And anything we can do, especially if the money's for free, to prevent that from happening before some kind of tragedy occurs, would be money well spent and/or, in this case, time well spent, because this is going to be grant-funded, so, thank you for bringing this forward. And for getting, did, did you reach out to the schools? Is that what happened?
Yes, we did. We met with the, the school principal a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, because I saw the letter, and that's, that was really wise, in my opinion, so thank you.
All right, are there any other questions of the council? Yes, so just to, to summarize, for when folks, when it comes up, the reason why it's at this location, it's the only location that's eligible for, for the grant funding, that, that's important, and in our letter, in our packet, we learned from the school district that the bus stop for the children going to Thunderbolt actually have to cross the road to get over to the bus stop in this, this particular area. So, it, it's impacting two schools, as, as Councilmember Groh had mentioned. So, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? You, if you could just come up to the microphone, so the folks at home, I'm, I'm sorry, the folks at home want to be engaged as well, so come on up to the microphone and state your name for, for the record for the clerk, and then ask away.
Okay, I'm Don Field, I'm a local resident. The question going through my mind is, on the HAWK signal system, is there a recycled time on it? In other words, a kid pushes the button, it goes through its set sequence on a timer. Is there a space between the completion of that cycle and when it will be activated on the next push of the button? In other words, can you get a group of kids with a childish sense of humor that will time it out and keep that intersection blocked just to entertain themselves? I see this as being a potential problem.
Yeah, there's, there's some flexibility in how you can program these HAWK signals, so we could probably take a look at that and see what we can do to reduce that probability.
That adjustment would be, I think, wise in the long run, knowing the perverse sense of humor of young children, particularly males.
Point well noted.
At any rate, that was my question.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Councilmember McCoy?
I move to adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash thirty-two ninety-five, approving the execution of the intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the design and construction of a HAWK signal at the intersection of Tacoma Boulevard North and Pima Drive North.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember McCoy and a second by Councilmember Groh. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is eight point six, Award Agreement for Professional Services for the two thousand nineteen tank and booster station improvements to Atkins. Mr. Abbott.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you. So, the scope before you today is, is actually the, the last in a five-year cycle to inspect all of our, all twenty-six, if you will, of our existing water storage tanks. And then, in subsequent years, we will, again, start the beginning. The, the goal here is to keep a, a five-year inspection cycle on all of our tanks to ensure that they are, are, are meeting current standards, and, and we're keeping them to, in, in a user capacity. So, the, the main items here, within the scope, that we're going to be looking at for all these tanks, are rafting, a dry inspection, MFL, which I'll explain a little bit what MFL is, and then a floor survey. So, rafting is, is just that. We, we literally will, will, will float these tanks in a raft, and it allows us to get up close and personal to the rafter area of, of these tanks. We have not done these in prior years, and, and what we found is that we weren't getting really good, clear inspection results on the, the rafter and, and the roof structure. So, this gives us the ability to get up close and personal to that structure prior to draining these tanks, and allowing us to move to the next steps of inspection, which then lead to a dry inspection, where we look at the coating, we look at other structural integrity, and then we move into the MFL testing, which is magnetic flux testing. And we actually, what we're doing there is we're looking at not only just the thickness of the material that's there, the steel that's left in the tank, but the condition that it's in. And years prior, we used to rely solely on a ultrasonic test, which told us that the steel existed in, in its prior thickness, but we didn't know the actual condition. And once we got into certain rehabs of these tanks, we were finding that although the UT identified as a certain thickness of steel remaining, once we would remove pieces of, of that floor, we would find that the underside was severely corroded, and there wasn't enough to sustain the structural integrity of the tank. So, these are all items that, that, over the years, through trial and error, we've learned that will help, will, will provide us the information we need to then determine the extent of the rehab, and/or, in a severe case, possible reconstruction of, of our So, on here, this is just the list of the six tanks that we're going to be inspecting, and you can see based on the, the years that they were constructed, the, the age ranges anywhere from the, the youngest being constructed in two thousand, that's out near the airport, it's only nineteen years old, but as old as some of these other tanks being constructed almost fifty years ago. Just to kind of show you where these tanks are located, they are located across town in various zones. And so, there's actually a reason why we're not inspecting tanks in, say, just the, the north part of town, or the central part of town. And most of that has to do with still providing service. So, in order for us to drain a tank, we, in most cases, we have a, another tank at, at a location that is still providing necessary service during those timeframes. Some of the items that we also look at, here's some pictures here that show some degradation to the interior coating. Coating's really important. Coating is, is, is replaceable, and in the scheme of things, it's actually cheaper, obviously, than, than the steel itself. So, as long as we, we keep our coatings up to par, it will continue to protect the steel that's underneath there. We'll look for irregularities in, in the, in the tank walls. We look at settlement and, and other deformations that may indicate settlement or, or other structural issues with the tank. These are some, probably some of the, the worst indications of corrosion. And, and what you see in, in this upper-left picture here are the rafter ends. These rafters support the, the roof structure over the tank, and you can see they're, they're delaminating, and, and there's a lot of corrosion happening. And one of the solutions to help not only combat this with protective coatings, but also in the way that we repair them and we construct them in the future, and that is with a, what we call a halo design. So, what a lot of these existing tanks were constructed with was what's called a dollar plate design, and that's basically a, a solid plate that, that all of these rafter ends are welded to. If you look at this picture here, you can see daylight. We have major ventilation there at the center of the tank. Well, that dollar plate doesn't really allow for, for a lot of ventilation. This halo design, it's open, still provides a structural support that's necessary, but allows that airflow, so we can eliminate the humidity buildup on, on, on the roof and the rafters, and, and keep it dry, and, and eliminate the possibility of corrosion there. So, with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Abbott?
If I may.
Councilmember Groh?
Mr. Abbott, thank you for the presentation. I was really excited to see the halo design because, obviously, that humidity's going to create issues with the rafters. You talked about the difference between the MFL and the UT inspection, so the ultrasound and the magnetic flux. Have you, do you give me a sense of, you know, I assume, where you get the best benefit for that magnetic inspection is when you're looking at the floor? Where, you know, the corrosion's going to be underneath it, and it's going to be nearly impossible to know that with the ultrasound, so we could have a failure that we didn't anticipate. We thought we had enough metal there, but it wasn't actually in good condition. Can you kind of speak to that a little?
Yeah, so to clarify, the, the, the MFL testing, the focus is only on the floor. We're, we're not going to be doing that on the, the roof or, or the walls, so, because we can see both sides of that. So, it is strictly limited just to the floor, where we can't physically get under to, to evaluate the condition of that floor.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the agreement for professional services for the 2019 tank and booster station improvements projects to Atkins.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is eight point seven, award agreement for professional services for the Highway ninety-five wastewater force main modeling project to Correlo Engineers. Mr. Abbott?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Council. So the purpose for this project, there's a few reasons that led us to this point, mainly due to the number of breaks that we've had on this line. This is an eight-inch ductile iron force main that runs parallel to the highway on the west side, to be specific, and I'll show, I've got some exhibits to show where that's at. But specifically due to those six breaks, four of those happening last year. So it's becoming more of an issue. And these breaks are really due to hydrogen sulfide and ultimately sulfuric acid. It's natural to have these things occurring in wastewater. The problem with steel and concrete is they don't react well with sulfuric acid, and over time, the acid eats away at these pipes. This is an existing force main that's twenty-one years old, and combined with various lift stations, it serves about fifteen hundred residential properties. The goal here, too, is, you know, that one of the simple solutions would be just to replace and kind the existing force main with PVC pipe that won't react to sulfuric acid like the ductile iron pipe does. But before we just simply go in there and replace it, we wanted to look at other alternatives. Is that really the best use of our funds? Are there more cost-effective and/or more efficiently, from an operational standpoint, solution to spend that money? So that's why we're proposing this project here. This is a picture of one of the repairs that shows the line prior to its replacement, and those are actual holes in the pipe, corrosion happening from the inside out. So this area just kind of identifies the areas that are being affected and/or served by this force main. So we're really mainly focusing on the north portion of town. Now, with all these dots, and green dots and red lines here, I want to explain, the green dots are the lift stations that are in this area, so, and also the north regional treatment plant to the furthest north here. So it just kind of paints a picture of the different lift stations that are all tied and all feeding and part of this network here in the north area. What you see in red is actually a portion of the original force main that was actually eliminated about ten years ago with a project where we diverted flows from a lift station that serves the mall and Home Depot, and we directed those flows over to our north regional treatment plant. The red dot down here is alongside the highway, and that identifies a future location of a regional lift station that was identified as part of our wastewater master plan, and identifies a location that potentially we could construct and/or would serve this area as it develops with sewer service. So it's just another example of a scenario that we could evaluate as part of this solution. So these green lines here show directionally the flow of sewer, and essentially it drains or is pumped downhill and then is pumped back uphill. So kind of identifies some of the operational limitations that we have, and again, trying to evaluate how to better solve this problem. From Canterbury, which is a subdivision here along Chenoweth Drive to the Bombay Lift Station, we're talking almost three miles worth of line, so it's not a small piece of, or not a small section of force main we're talking about here. This is just an exhibit from the finalization of our wastewater program, and it really identifies some of the alternatives and some of the possibilities of infrastructure that could be implemented to serve the north area, whether that means new development and/or ongoing service to the existing development. So this project is really looking at possible six scenarios. Six is kind of a number that we wanted to make sure we spent enough time looking at all feasible solutions here before we just replace this line and kind. But it requires some modeling and some surge analysis to ensure that these options that we come up with, that we can physically accomplish them. We will be looking at, you know, pumping costs, pump replacements in those scenarios, and then bringing to the table overall cost impacts of each scenario to figure out which is, one, the most economical and which is the most operationally effective scenario. And we may find that simply replacing the line and kind is that, but we felt that there's enough going on up in this area that we should take a closer look at that. So the schedule for this project is estimated at five months. This is not a budgeted project, so we are asking to use contingency funds, which are currently available, and that's simply due to the fact that we feel that we should attack this situation sooner than later, due to the number of breaks that we've had over the last twelve months. We are, staff is proposing with the upcoming budget, some funds to address this. Not knowing which scenario we're going to go with, we looked at what we expect to be the most costly, and that is replacing the line and kind. So that's what we're estimating construction dollars in the future CIP related to this And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Abbott?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn?
Can you tell us, you said there were a couple of breaks in the past, what was our most recent break?
The most, two recent, happened in November.
So, I know we can't anticipate anything, but five months is a long time to do this evaluation, or, I hate saying it, but do you anticipate there's going to be any breaks during that time?
Well, hopefully not, but again, we can't predict that. We do know that our wastewater staff has taken some precautions to alleviate potential breaks as much as possible, but again, with the constant degradation of that ductile iron line, we know that another break is imminent, we just don't know when.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Groh, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I will try to keep it short because we're into record territory here in an hour and twenty minutes, almost. So, Mr. Abbott, if I may ask, in your best estimate, at least the experience that we've had here in Lake Havasu, let's put it that way, the number of years that we're getting out of the ductile iron before we start to see the failures as it goes through the hydrants and sulfide to sulfuric acid issues that, you know, are going to eat away the iron, how many years roughly before we start getting breaks?
Well, that's a really good question, and I guess the way I'll answer that is typically a force main, depending on how it's designed, usually stays full, full of wastewater. And so without the introduction of air, you don't have the creation of the sulfuric acid. So ductile iron tends to work better and have a longer life, depending on how it was originally designed. This line, what makes this line different from most is that it actually flows, it pumps downhill. It was only meant to be temporary and was built for the development to the north area, Home Depot, the mall, and was meant at some point to look at reversal of that flow. I don't know if that necessarily answers your question as far as life expectancy, but...
No, but that does answer my question in a different way, and I thank you, Mr. Abbott. My next question is going to tie into that, which is how much of the stuff do we have in the city that would basically benefit from our analysis here? Ballpark is fine.
Uh, can you...
Other ductile iron deployments throughout the city of Lake Havasu. In other words, we're going to spend a fairly large pile of money to do an analysis, including a surge analysis, I'm not sure how you do that unless you're doing that with... But anyways, what I'm driving at is, if we understand the best way to deal with this area, are we able to take those lessons and apply them? Are there other areas in the city that may benefit from this?
Uh, yes, absolutely, but this is a rare situation in the way that this line was designed. Other current applications with ductile iron in use weren't designed in this manner. So we don't anticipate the same issues, we expect a longer life of that DIP because it does flow mostly full, and the direction and the location of what's called an air relief valve that introduces air and expels air out of the system when it, as it pumps.
And can you give me an idea how you do the surge analysis?
So that is actually done through software, but it really basically takes, you're looking at pressures, you're looking at flows, and you're, because of that north area and the fact that you have five lift stations, all of them pumping at different times, all of them of different sizes, so they increase the pressure differently and the flows in that line differently. So it basically takes all of that information and analyzes it and looks at, based on that flow, based on that pressure, what scenarios are happening? Are we creating any other surge issues in the system? And/or can we physically say reverse direction of flow by making a change and/or instead of pumping downhill, pump more, shorter distance, say, uphill to the north regional treatment plant?
Okay, and then another quick question is, I'm going to make an assumption, it's a guess, but it's calculated guess, obviously, we're going to do this in a CAD program, probably we have something to do this with, but I'm assuming we would not have necessarily the additional software add-ons required to do the surge analysis. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, yes, it's actually a specialty-type software that the city does not have, and that's why we are contracting with Correlo to help us with that.
Right, yeah, that's what I was wondering. And do you have a ballpark idea of how much that software might cost?
Uh, no, I do not. I haven't personally used it, I don't know the cost of it. Some of it is actually proprietary and some of it's actually created by professional engineering firms. It's not necessarily open for market use.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I was like, wondering about that, because we use similar software in the oil and gas industry, and it is very proprietary. That's why I was curious. Seems like you're getting a fairly good deal by going to Correlo to do this, obviously we can't afford to do that ourselves. And then the other reason I asked you about the amount of iron that we have compared to analyzing this with PVC, you said you wanted to do this to find out, is this actually the best material to use? What other options might we have?
Oh, yeah, just for clarification, we're not really looking at if this is the best material to use. We know the answer to that, and in most cases, it's plastic in applications of wastewater use. But more or less, again, making changes to our actual system and changing the direction of flow from some of these lift stations in different directions, and the possible elimination of sections of this eight-inch force main is what we're trying to decide and/or figure out.
That's enough for Gordy for now, thanks.
Any other councilmembers have any questions? Jeremy, you'd mentioned the PVC a few times, that we think the eventual outcome is going to tell us that we would want to replace the ink kind with PVC. Have we done any cost estimates on what it would be to just do the PVC now in that area?
Yeah, and that kind of leads to my comment about staff recommending some dollars in the upcoming CIP for replacement. So we looked at it, and, you know, you're in the million to million and a half dollar range for replacement of that two-point-seven miles with PVC pipe.
Okay. And then also, you'd mentioned the budget was in contingency, but our council communication doesn't indicate that. Is that, did something change? We show it's coming from the postponement of water conservation reuse improvements in our project number.
That's for the budget allocation, yes. So because of the postponement of that project, the budget allocation exists, but the actual funds would come from contingency.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
Mayor, the funding source on the council communication identifies it as contingency, but yeah, it needs to be highlighted a little clearer next time.
Okay. Should, sure, suggested motion be amended to include that it's coming from contingency? No? Okay. Councilmember Lynn, did you have an additional comment?
Maybe I just have a quick question. In the project management and meetings, it says that the consultant will provide the city with monthly project status reports. If sometime during that report, we get some information back that said there's an immediate thing, is that something that we'll be able to come back and address?
Oh, sure, yes, absolutely.
We don't have to wait the five months?
Yeah, through this process, Correlo isn't going to step away and work in a bubble. There's a lot of staff on engineering and wastewater, and we will be deeply involved with them through this process.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Now that I've learned that stuff also goes uphill, I'd like to make a motion. I move to award the agreement for professional services for the Highway ninety-five wastewater force main modeling project to Correlo Engineers.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Groh. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point eight, award agreement for professional services for the Mulberry wastewater treatment plant tertiary capacity increase to Correlo Engineers. Mr. Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the plant was originally constructed in nineteen eighty-six, making it a little over thirty years old. Just to give you an idea, this is an aerial photo of our wastewater, of our Mulberry wastewater treatment plant, and this arrow's pointing to this little area down here, which is where our current tertiary filters exist. And tertiary is just a fancy name for third in process as we treat our wastewater before we disinfect it. So as I said, the plant's a little over thirty years old. We did a pretty massive expansion back in two thousand and four, about fifteen years ago, which doubled the capacity of that plant from one-point-one to the current two-point-two MGD that it currently has. And this photo that you see here in the lower corner, that's a photo of the existing filters. They are referred to as a fuzzy filter. That is an actual copyrighted name. So it's, there's not little stuffed animals floating around in there, but something similar. The expected life of these filters are twenty years, and I will note that Schreiber has been out to this plant and was actually very happy to see the current condition. The wastewater staff is taking very good care of the existing filters that we have. Here's a different view of the filters. Essentially, this is to increase filter capacity at the plant. There's different alternatives that we could look at, and the best alternative that we, we being staff, identified was to simply add a third filter in this train. And there's a couple of reasons for that. These two filters were built for the existing capacity. However, they have to backwash, they have to cycle through a cleaning cycle, if you will, and that's dependent on how much wastewater is being treated through the plant. So currently, when these filters, when one at a time is in a backwash cycle, you cannot treat the capacity of the plant. So that's where the third one comes in. If one is ever in a backwash cycle, we're still always able to treat the capacity, the intended capacity, at that plant. So we, this scope is just a little under budget. It's about a four-month design schedule, and what we're looking at doing here is a little bit different than what we have done in the most recent past. Most of our projects are design bid build. We're looking at a construction manager at risk procurement method here. And what that allows us to do, and that's part of the effort here with Correlo, is helping us select that contractor. We're actually able to select a contractor based on qualifications and experience and not just going with a low bid, and that's important. not just going with a low bid, and that's important for a couple of reasons. One, negotiations with the suppliers, but also to be involved in the design process, and not so much looking at just simply the design. As you see here in this graphic, we are fairly confident that we can squeeze with some adjustments, the third filter in the basin that currently exists, which is important, because if we weren't, that would increase the cost of this project exponentially. So, bringing in the contractor in, we really focus on the operation of the plant as we physically construct this and add this filter. That can be very complicated, so we work with our operators, we work with the design staff, and we work with the contractor that's physically going to be doing that work to lay out those details, you know, closing this valve on this day, opening this valve on this day, and even maybe diverting flows from this plant to another plant during certain times of construction. So, with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Rabbit?
Just one.
Okay.
I can see you've got a lot of stuff going on, you've got your twelve-inch, you've got your sixteen-inch, you've got your four-inch pipe, blah, 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 blah. But when you were talking about the backwash and the capacity, you said we have a two-point-two MGD capacity. Right now, the way it's designed, so I'm guessing that if we have to take one down and do a backwash, our average capacity, or we have spike in capacity, is greater than one-point-one MGD there?
Well, yes, essentially, we're talking half, fifty percent. So, you take one filter out during that backwash cycle, and you're limiting the filtration process of the plant, not the rest of the process, just the filtration, to half that, one-point-one MGD. That's the restriction. So, by adding a third, we will always have two filters in operation during one being in a backwash cycle.
Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the agreement for professional services for the Mulberry WWTP Tertary Capacity Increase Project to Corolla Engineers.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item eight point nine, award bid for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen-nineteen Fog Seal Program to Chola Pavement Maintenance, Inc. Mr. Clark?
If you could grab the microphone, please, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, the item before you is a presentation for the award of the Micro Seal Program for Lake Havasu City, I'm sorry, Fog Seal Program for Lake Havasu City. We do our pavement maintenance, we try and do it at the right time with the right treatment, so it's cost-effective, and we try and prevent rehabilitation or reconstruction. A dollar spent on preventative maintenance usually saves about twenty dollars on complete construction or reconstruction, so that's why we deal with these fog seals and slurry seals. This is a list of the streets related to the fog seal. What drives this list is streets that qualify for fog seal. These are streets that are still in good enough condition that we can fog seal, get one more maintenance cycle out of them, and don't have to chip seal, don't have to do some more expensive treatment. One of the disappointing things, as I get older and as prices increase, is that what used to be ten or fifteen cents a square yard now has increased in prices. Fog seal is no longer a really inexpensive process, but in comparison to the cost of a chip seal or a slurry seal, it's a very, still a cost-effective process. And then finally, it's just like painting your house, wood, for most of you that live in the desert, you don't have wood on your house, because you would have to be painting it every three or four or five years, and that's exactly what we have to do with fog seal. The sun bleaches the asphalt out of the roadway, ages the asphalt, and so this basically prevents that from happening and seals your surface to prevent further damage and further degradation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the fog seal.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Clark? All right. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lane?
No, it's not a question, it's just a comment, because everybody knows how much I hate chip sealing. Mark and I have had very numerous conversations on this, because he loves chip sealing. So, thank you. I'm very happy that we are looking at some alternatives to getting away from some chip sealing and going to some fog sealing, and with this companion item that you're going to have here, some other roadway preservation materials, so I'm very happy, at least we're starting, thank you.
With that being said, we still will have chips on our roads, coming really soon, so, but we're making progress.
On some, but we are making progress, and we are doing some other things other than just chip sealing everywhere.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen-nineteen Fog Seal Program base bid and alternate bid to Chola Pavement Maintenance, Inc., in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and zero cents.
I would love to second that motion for Choya.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dolan and a second by Councilmember Groat, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And the next item is item eight point, eight point ten, award bid for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen-nineteen Micro Seal Program to Regional Pavement Maintenance of Arizona, Inc. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One of the first items that the new city manager asked me about a year ago was to be looking at alternative treatments to chip seal. We had several discussions, very passionate about being effective and efficient in our use of our pavement, limited pavement resources, and we're happy to bring this bid to you now. We did a small test area, these six or seven streets over by Oregon Grandy School, picked because it was a confined area, would give us a good price estimate on the cost of the treatment. It did come in more than chip seal. In addition to that, it will require us to fog seal these streets in two or three years, which we don't have to do with chip seal, but it is, has narrowed the gap a little bit. Typically, this kind of slurry, a micro seal, which is an enhanced slurry, would be in the neighborhood of two-fifty to three dollars a square yard, which is what we experienced previously when we were using a lot of it. But obviously, maybe the technology's changed, or the processes have changed, or it may have been a case where a contractor sharpened his pencil, saw a very small, limited area where he could get in and do the work and not have to hop all over town. So, we were very happy to see these prices, and again, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Clark? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the bid for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Micro Seal Program to Regional Pavement Maintenance of Arizona, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch, is there any additional comments from the council? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clark. Item nine on our agenda is current events, do any members of the council have any council committee reports? No? All right, moving on to item number ten, which is our final call to the public, would anyone like to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item eleven is future meetings. We have a future meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM, a regular meeting. On Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at nine AM, we'll have a budget and a CIP overview work session. On Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at four PM, we'll have an executive session, and on Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM, we'll have a regular meeting. Item twelve, is there any future agenda items from any of the councilmembers? All right, our final item on the agenda is adjourned, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy, we are adjourned.